We're going to call the meeting to order. Public input is maximum 30 minutes is a recommended resolution. And the public input section be moved to the end of the meeting after public question period. Public input is for the purpose of permitting people in the gallery to provide input. Should not last any longer than 30 minutes unless approved by majority vote of council. Each speaker may provide respectful comment on any topic that seem appropriate. And not necessarily on the topics of the agenda of the meeting. The public input opportunity is meant for input and questions and answers. Each speaker may not speak longer than two minutes, but may have a second opportunity if time permits. Each speaker must allow to speak, pardon me, each speaker must not be allowed to speak regarding bylaws in respect of which a public hearing has been held. For the record, we would state the name and address. Now, the recommended resolution is to move this to the end of the meeting. Do I have a motion on that? A second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? One of the things that, well, I guess I need to be a little clear on is, are we doing for now one when we get questions in, we're moving them to the next meeting? Is that correct? If they come in prior to the agenda being made?
Mayor Baker, just to remind everybody at the January 26th committee of the whole meeting, council passed the resolution which was adopted at the following meeting on February 2nd, which had been scheduled to the 4th. The resolution which said that all items received after the agenda had been published would be moved to the end, to the public input section at the end of the following meeting. And as you may know, the agenda gets published on the Thursday prior to the meeting. And or sometimes Friday, but generally Thursday. And so any, any, any received correspondence after that point would be put on the following agenda at the end from public members. That, that was what, and council also directed at that same meeting that staff return to council sometime in March with proposed revisions to the procedures bylaw, bylaw number 316, which establishes the format for council to conduct its meetings and its business.
Okay. Anybody else want to chime in? All good? Okay. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Introduction of late items. From what I understand, we do not have any late items today. Approval of agenda, recommended resolution that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting for council for February 9th, 2021 be approved. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
I have a second? Second? Thank you. Discussion? Opposed? Opposed? Nope. Hearing done, motion carried. Minutes of previous meetings, none? Petition and delegations? None?
Question on the, the minutes of the previous meeting. Are, are they not available or have they not been produced or?
Through, through the chair, sorry, through the chair to councillor Paulson. The minutes are generally approved at the next meeting. So this is a Cal meeting. So the last Cal minutes were approved at the January 26th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Or February 2nd, actually.
Correspondence? None? Council report? Nobody? Reports on committees? Any council have any reports on committees? No? The mayor's report, did everybody receive the, the forward email from the mayor in Port Hardy regarding the fire equipment? Any questions regarding, I sent, I forwarded a copy today. I got sent an email, the letter that is going to the provincial government. I received today. Did everybody get a chance to read that letter?
Didn't get a chance to read it yet.
Okay, so if you could please read that and get back to me? That would be great. Because we wanted, they were going to send that off to the minister and they want everybody's approval on that. Unfinished business. CAO?
Sorry, yes, thank you, Mayor Baker. Just on that last item, that letter will come forward on the next meeting on February 16th for council to pass a resolution on. And then I think they've asked for a response by February 26th.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Unfinished business? Okay, staff reports. Staff report is the asset management plan, policies and strategy. CAO?
Thank you very much. So you'll note that we haven't attached the asset management plan. This is, if you can see this, this is the asset management plan. It provides a bit of an overview of the strategy as well as a plan for each of seven areas. So things like infrastructure, water and sewer, the vehicles, the buildings. And so our proposal is to provide that to you in hard copy so that you have an opportunity to go through it before the time when we review it in March. And it's, it's a pretty good overview of our assets, although we haven't, it's not complete, of course. The water treatment plant isn't in there yet. And once the weir is built, that'll be added. But essentially what it does is that it looks at the assets and especially on some assets that are critical assets, such as the infrastructure. And it does a risk management assessment of what the likelihood of its failure and the consequences of its failure. You'll note that for our water sewer and drainage system infrastructure, they all rank as being fairly high in terms of the risk of them failing and the consequences of them failing. And so when we look at that asset management plan as an, as an item on its own in March, council will have an opportunity to really explore the strategies going forward to, to look at sort of replacement and upgrade. And so it'll work towards the five-year plan, sort of starting maybe in 2022 to 2027. Because obviously there's a lot of expenses associated with any kind of work to replace either incrementally or as a, as a project. But, but it's here because it's an important part of the financial plan, but sort of separate in the sense that it guides the process going forward. Whereas the financial plan that you've been looking at for the last two or three meetings, and tonight, of course, you're going to see version three of that. It, it's, it's not really part of the financial plan for this year, but it sets the tone for the following years coming forward and it gives council an idea of what's ahead. So what we've recommended tonight is that, that council, well, from the staff report, you'll see that it kind of gives an overview of the, of the elements of the asset management plan. So that would be the policy that council adopted in October of 2016, which provides sort of the guiding principles and the sort of outcomes for that work. And there also is an asset management strategy, which, which talks about more strategic objectives, like the level of service. And, and those things can be looked at in detail in March, particularly with respect to some of the costs that council occurs, incurs for things like the infrastructure that we currently operate. And then, of course, the final element of the plan is the individual asset category. So there's a plan in there for roads, sewer, storm, and then drainage and fleets and buildings and some of the equipment. It's a pretty good read, but it's one that you'll want to be sort of lying on the couch with a cup of tea over. You wouldn't want to be looking at it maybe on your computer because it's quite long, but it's quite interesting. And it, and it really is well, well laid out. It's pretty intuitive to read. We'll also link it on the website so that public has an idea to appreciate the kind of things that are, you know, that are ahead. And, and it, and it just provides that framework. So this, this is just a sort of a heads up that this is a strategy that you'll be asked to review and, and come back in at March 16th regular council meeting to sort of, I guess, give direction to staff on going forward and, and to get a sense of what we're looking at for infrastructure need in the future. And it's a good time to bring some of the cost things that we're, you know, you'll, you'll see in the financial plan tonight. You know, the, the varying costs for things like the Kelsey Center is a really good example. That March 16th meeting is a really good opportunity to look at the real costs that are ahead and to come up with a plan for all the infrastructure. So that is the purpose of that staff report. And there's two resolutions that first that you receive, the policy, strategy and plans for your information and discussion if you like. And then direction to staff to bring this back in March, which gives you about five or six weeks to really get a sense of it. And we can provide that to you in a hard, in a binder, which we'll do over the next few days and, or electronically if you prefer. So that's, that is the, the intention of this particular staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. So recommended resolution that the committee of the whole receive the asset management policy, strategy and plans report for information and discussion. And that the staff return to council on March 16th, 2021, regular meeting to discuss asset management policy, strategy and plans will be provided to council in a binder to review in advance for that meeting. So I have a motion, please.
So I'm moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Opposed? Discussion? Councillor Paulson?
I, I would like to know when the binders would be ready.
She mentioned, CAO mentioned it'd be in the next couple of days.
Okay. And, and what about electronically will be sent to us? Okay, good. Thank you.
You'll have both options, Sarah.
Thanks.
Motion carried? Okay, the staff report, salary and wages. CAO?
Thank you. I'd just like to say first of all that we appreciate you, your diligence on this. And I recognize that we've had several meetings, extra meetings in the last few months. And hopefully, you know, we're at version three of the financial plan. And this is probably the final version with the exception of, you know, other money coming in, little pieces of grant money that we might luckily receive or items that the auditors who will be coming in to do their audit next week might pick up. But, you know, this is the, hopefully the, we're getting close to the end. So I appreciate that there's been a fair bit of time that we've asked of you to review this financial plan. So we're getting to the end. This particular staff report is rolls together salaries and wages and benefits. It's, it's difficult, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, that when you go through the financial plan summary documents, staff and wages are rolled into all the services as we're required to do. So they're portioned out to each of the areas and each of the departments. And but this report gives you an overview of the package. And it gives you a sense of the, the variance from last year, which isn't really much of a variance. There's, there's been a fairly steady about the same percent change over the last several years. This year, of course, there was a bit of a surplus because there were some vacancies and a few changes in that regard with respect to the splitting of the position from, to have a CAO and a CFO. And also the other thing that's, that's different in this year is I've proposed to, to seek somebody who could provide on-call services. As you know, in the 12-hour power outage last Saturday, our public works staff were out towing around the generators again for the 12 hours that the power was out Saturday night and the next day. So this is extra time over and above their regular 40 hours a week. And so I think it would be useful to consider recruiting somebody who could be trained to do the on-call. It, it's almost the same as what we end up paying in overtime in terms of our costs. But it provides a better quality of life for our staff and for more safety because they're not carrying out additional hours over and above what they've already invested in their work week. So that, that there is an extra $10,000 that is included in the wages and benefits portion of the financial plan with council support to recruit, train and employ an on-call manager of public works. The, the advantage of this is that if we're able to, it might be a, a good succession planning strategy for us because, you know, I'm very aware that as risks go, the loss of that particular individual to the village would be pretty significant. That, you know, nobody else has the qualifications to run the water treatment plant, the sewage pond and, and do some of the pool maintenance work. So it's, I think, a good risk management strategy for the village to consider having some backup skill sets and somebody who's available in the event that our staff were not. We, we, we did experience a close call already last year when our staff was, was pretty significantly injured and on some reduced duties for quite a while. So the likelihood of risk is there and the consequences we know are pretty significant. So that's the, that is another thing that's, that's different this year. There's other future costs that have been included in this portion of the financial plan, which include records, management, bylaw updates and trying to find somebody, possibly a summer student who could work with our group for, say, 12 weeks or so to do a bylaw update so that we're, we, we have the capacity to respond quickly and nimbly to what we expect to see as future development in the village, given the interest that's occurred in the last little bit. There's also some recreation hours. They've been reduced slightly this year, of course, because of the COVID impact on attendance and uptake of the rec center programs and facility. And so there's, and there's some, some reduced hours on Sunday now and reduced hours on Friday. So this has reduced the overall cost with respect to recreation hours. But other than that, I think, oh, and then the other thing is there's been a slight increase due to both CFO and the CAO being eligible for the benefits plan, which previously was one position. And so that is the summary of this salaries and wages staff report. But if, if there's any questions, we can, we can delve into that.
Thank you, CAO. Does anyone have any questions? Any counsel? No, I'm sorry, councillor Paulson?
Yes, I, I have a few questions for the CAO. I'm in the background information, it says that the rate has been consistent year over year at 3% of the COLA clause being, the wages being increased. And I'm wondering if the COLA clause continues to be constant at 3% or has there been a change in it over the last few years?
Thank you. Can I ask the CFO to, to give her perspective on this? Because her knowledge, this is a lot deeper than mine.
Thank you, mayor and council. The 3% has been consistent year over year. So as long as I've been here, which is four years now, that's what it has always been. I don't know before that. If you needed that information, I could definitely get it for you. But, but it has been the same every year since I've been here.
Okay, I just noticed with my municipal pension plan that the increase had dropped to almost less than 1%, I believe it was for this, this year. So I just wondered if that had any effect on, because the pension is indexed too, to the cost of living increases. So I was, I had, was curious about that. And I also, when I look at the salaries and wages, the actual salaries and wages for 2020, and then at the 2021 draft budget, it's about 106, almost $107,000 increase. And I'm, I'm just wondering if the draft budget should be closer to the actual budget or will it be because we have two management positions now and the benefits for two? Is that what part of the increase is or? How, how, how does that come about?
So through the, through the chair to councillor Paulson. And then if the CAO has things to add, I'd just like to point out that the actual, or sorry, the, yeah, the actual proposed from 2020 was 317,000. And it jumped to four, it, it jumped, it was so low because we had, we were under budget by almost 100,000 because of the vacancies over the, the several months that there were vacancies. That, that makes the 317 go down from what we had expected to be, which would have been around 408.
Right.
And then, so in fact, the, there is about a $15,000 increase between the 424 and 408, which is budgeted again in the draft budget. So that, that, that is the difference. It's not really a difference between 317 and 424 doesn't represent an increase. It really represents the vacancy. So we actually underspent what we'd expected. And so this is proposed to bring us back to just a little over what we thought we'd spend this year. Again, relating to the, the items that I've listed, the, the opportunity for on-call and then the two positions being receiving wages and benefits.
Okay, thank you. And then I have two more questions. On number three on page seven, future costs may include records management. And I, I'm just wondering what, what that is about? What, what are records management?
Well, we have some obligations under the, as, as a local government, there are obligations to identify how records will be kept, how long they'll be kept and to go through a process to get rid of those we don't need. Because of course it costs money to store them. But some we keep forever. So there are some rules around that. In the mean, in the meantime, they've kind of been gathering up. So there's some work to do there to sort out the records, the ones that need to be kept, the ones that need to be destroyed. And then, of course, the bylaw updates are, I don't know if that was part of your question, but.
That was that part, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, if you, if you'll notice on our website now, we have a number of bylaws that it's kind of sometimes difficult to find the one that's the actual bylaw. So I think that the, you know, the idea is, and, and we've, we're now, we're seeking some quotes for our new website design, which council approved staff to proceed with a few weeks ago. And so when we have a new website, you know, the idea is to be sort of present and ready, build it and they will come so that when, when we get an application for anything, it's really easy to direct people to the website to find out what the zoning is, what the OCP is, what the procedures, the fees and charges, all of those things. So it's really about being ready and being present for serving the needs of citizens and, and cleaning that up. We don't really know how much it'll cost, but I, I was sort of thinking that we might, if we can find some kind of a summer student grant that provides us to sort of subsidize possibly a planning student from VIU or, or any, any student really who has an interest in, in doing this work under our direction. It would, you know, it'd be a great summer job for them. It wouldn't cost a lot. And we, you know, we'd be able to really make some progress on that work. So probably not looking at a lot of money. They, you know, it, you know, something like 12 weeks of their summer vacation to, to work with us to do that at, you know, a reasonable wage.
So would these, so would these be considered one-time projects?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and it, it's work that's kind of been building up and.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councillor?
I, I can add that, you know, we, we obviously would come back to council with the details of this if we were successful at getting funding or getting into a student grant program. Or, you know, it doesn't have to be a student either, of course. But if we're successful at finding a source of funding, we would bring this back to council with the details of, you know, what we're proposing. And of course, council would in the end be approving all of the updates and all the project work. It's really about sort of cleaning up some things.
Good. Thank you.
Councillor Tinsley, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Right, councillor Kushner? Do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, I have a question, CAO. So the benefit payroll cost from 82,000 to 96 is because you have, as you explained, it's because you have the CFO on benefits and yourself. Is that correct?
You know something, I, I'd feel better about the CFO answering this detail because she's done most of the work on this.
Okay, thank you. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that, that's part of it. There's also two other employees that are now eligible for benefits. So there's four in total that are newly on the benefits plan for 2021.
Okay, and that differs from all the years before. Is that correct?
Two would be new. Well, I guess three, because the CAO CFO position used to be one and that position was always on benefits. So can't really count that. But there is two, two other employees that are eligible now.
Okay, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to find a $10,000 grant or a grant for the summer student to cover that summer job. Because, you know, of course, we're a little bit higher than I'm real comfortable with myself. But that's just, hopefully we can get the grant. Okay, so moving on, recommended resolution that the committee of the whole receive the salary, wages and benefits from 2021 report, review and discussion as a part of the 2021 to 2025 financial plan. Do I have a motion, please?
You do so.
Second? Opposed? Discussion? Hearing done, motion carried? Staff report from the financial plan from 2021 to 2025. And that would be to the CFO, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like the CAO has mentioned to everybody, this is version three of the financial plan. And as she also mentioned, it's, it's pretty much finalized. There may be a few items that need to be added in for the final version, which will come to council. If you're looking at this schedule on the March 2nd, regular council meeting would be when you would have your final view of the financial plan. And at that point, it would be, you know, direction to staff to, to prepare the first three readings of the financial plan bylaw, which will be on the March 16th council meeting. So there isn't really anything too different between version two and version three. I've included basically the same information that you've seen before. One thing I did add to this version was the drainage plan that council approved. So the cost for doing that has been included. Trying to think what else was added in here. I have looked into funding for the ramp and railings for the gazebo through the Rick Hansen Foundation. And unfortunately, at this time, they're not accepting any applications. So I'm, I'm still looking, I'm, I'm hoping they are going to open some sort of a funding stream this year. But at this point, it's closed. And the other item that council asked me to look into was the splitting of the costs for the generator for the fire department. And I have initiated discussions with the SRD on that. They do seem to agree that it would be a shared cost probably only for the reasons that we had discussed at the last meeting, that the fire truck needs to be plugged in. It's, it's related to firefighting. It's not specifically for the building. So those discussions are still being worked out, whether they will provide funding for that. So right now I've put it in the budget as 50/50 in the hopes that that, that will come through. And I'll provide council with an update as soon as I, as soon as I know more. Another item I included just for your reference is on page 12. The CAO had asked me to just include a little chart on year-over-year increases for municipal taxes and user fees, just so that council could see that comparison. So I'm hoping that little chart is helpful. And on page 13, I included a little chart showing surplus. And on page 13, I included a little chart showing surpluses and reserves from 2011 to 2019, again, just for council's reference, to see how it's changed over the years. You can see in there that it was, it ranges from a low of about 885,000 in 2011 to a high of almost 1.3 million in 2017. So hopefully that's a bit helpful. And if, if there's specific items that you'd like to discuss tonight, then feel free to do so. And either myself or the C O can, can answer your questions.
Thank you. Counselors? Anyone have a question? Counselor Tinsley?
I just had, one's a line item question. And so on, on the detailed, so total rec, rec center revenue, we had, in 2020, we had a budget of 46,000. And obviously that was down with COVID, so it was only 21,000. So we, we budgeted, it looks like 34 for eight, 34, 800 for 2021, which is reasonable. We don't know how long COVID is going to keep affecting it. But then suddenly, and it's not a huge issue because everything can be changed year to year, but then suddenly it, like the ones out to 2025 suddenly dropped to like $14,000. Is, is there a reason for that?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor Tinsley, what page are you on?
Uh, well, the detailed budget. I don't have, oh, I do have numbers, 25, page 25.
Thank you.
Sorry, my apologies.
No, it's all good.
So on the orange line there, the total rec center revenue.
CFO?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can answer that. So through the mayor to Counselor Tinsley. You can see in 2021, we've got a transfer from reserves of 20,000.
Okay.
So that's to cover off some COVID expenses.
Okay.
And so that doesn't carry forward to future years because it's a one-time, a one-time cost for 2021. So that's why there's such a, a difference there. So for 2022 to 2025, the budget's reduced by that $20,000 because again, it's a one-time, a one-time cost. And so the, the revenue coming in is, is coming from reserves. It's not coming from sales of service or, or the rec center revenue per se.
Okay. So, so, so for the budget on 2020 of 46,000, it was only a transfer of 3,500, right?
Correct.
So I see, okay, so then you're, yeah, I get it. Okay, I get it now. Yeah, makes sense. Thank you. Um, sorry, I just had one more question, which is related to the COVID, and maybe this is totally separate, but it, it's a separate item in the financial plan around, you know, we've made some decisions around the, the federal government grant money of a sizable amount. And there's still a sizable amount left. Is, are we going to be continuing that as a separate a, a review to ensure those funds are utilized?
Through the chair to Counselor Tinsley, and I, I think the CFO will probably, may have some other things to add. But one of the things I was proposing to bring back to council next week is, or next time we meet, rather, not next week, we have a two-week break, finally, is to propose that some of that money be used for the generators, for the lift stations. And I'm waiting on the quotes from the supplier right now. We'd followed up a couple of times, but I didn't have it ready for tonight. And I didn't want to bring it back to you until we actually had some real numbers. But, you know, there's other things that we, you know, I think the mayor has mentioned some ideas about that as well. And so we could come back, obviously we would come back right now that the remainder.
I'm sorry. C O, you cut out.
Your, your mic went off. Just unmute, it muted for some reason. Unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. So we, 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 council's allocated, I think, about 50,000. I might be wrong on that, but I think there's 200 and some left that's been put in reserve. So we would come back to, to council with proposed expenditures for that. I think, you know, that's something that we'd like to bring to you. But we'd like to get, I'd like to get those quotes for the generators so that at least you have that to look at, you know, even if they're purchased incrementally, one or two a year. But that's, that's sort of what we had in mind, that it's sitting in reserve until council makes a decision on how to use that. Now, part of the other piece to this, though, of course, is that when you get to the asset management portion in March, that, that's another opportunity to look at future expenses, big expenses. And so council may choose to direct some of that funding to some of the assets that are in need of attention through that process. So, but, but again, since the asset management portion is such a big document and we've already sort of imposed on you to meet weekly for the last few weeks, we thought it'd be better to sort of separate that financial plan from the asset management and give you time to go through it. And then the money will be there to direct staff on how, how it could be apportioned. That was our thinking.
C O? If you only did one or two generators, it still puts our staff in the position of working those extra hours plus 12 or 14 or 20-hour days. Is that not correct?
Yeah, yeah, I, I wouldn't recommend that. But of course, council might choose to, you know, to, to offset that with other, other expenditures that might be in need. To me, that's the biggest one, but.
Because if we're looking at the safety of our staff plus the public from somebody who's sleep deprived.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because, you know, you're working a 24-hour day and you've got to go every two hours to the one lift station.
Yes.
Every six hours to another. I'd think either we get them all. My personal view, view is if we're going to do it, we just get all four and be done with it. Council, what do you think?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Counselor Paulson? Counselor Paulson?
Sounds sensible to me.
Counselor Tinsley?
It sounds sensibly to me. Obviously, we don't know the final number, so it'll be, you know, subject to that, right?
Correct. Thank you. CFO? Or sorry, does any other counselors have any questions for the CFO? Nope. Okay, CFO, page nine, the staff report. Infrastructure upgrades and asset replacements. Admin and K C upgrades and maintenance. Is that the COVID expense that we talked about? Or what is the 15, 5, 4?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was, and I believe we had discussed this at a previous meeting. Part of it is to remedy the issues that we're having with the storage room, with the condensation and water leakage. And then the other portion was some upgrades to the front counter and flooring here in the office.
Okay. Do you believe, C O, that is the flooring and the countertop necessary this year?
Well, Mayor Baker, I, my view is that we need to, we, we're not out of COVID. And I, I think it would be worth setting up the office so that we have some separation for staff, reorienting their desks so that they can look to the customer counter and provide. I mean, I know one of our staff is sitting there now, but we could set that up a little differently. I think we probably need some ergonomic assessment as well of the workspaces because staff are at their desks eight hours a day. And I personally have had the carpal tunnel surgery in both hands. And so I wouldn't want to impose that on others. But I, I, I think it's your call, you know, you take a look at the carpeting. It's, it's not a huge expense, but I think over time, you know, it's my view that we keep, we keep up, especially in our front entrance where we, that's our, our sort of face to the public. We want to give some confidence that the, the office is well-looked after and, and present for public use and public service. But, you know, if you feel that that money should be reallocated somewhere else, obviously that, that's council's role to give direction to us, so.
Yes, you mentioned it was COVID-related?
Well, in the sense that, you know, we're trying to put the plexiglass up. We're trying to keep separation of uses and, you know, trying to keep, we have people coming through for various reasons, and that seems to be the preferred door. So the idea was to try and space it a little differently so that we have some protection. But, you know, I, I guess everything, COVID seems to infiltrate every decision these days, but obviously it's not the only driving one. Like carpeting is quite old, quite worn. I, you know, I don't know if it's dangerous yet, but there are a couple of separations where I wouldn't want to see somebody trip, but I don't think it's there yet. So it's really up to council to direct us if, if that's an expense you see as being something we should go forward with.
From what I understand, cannot in terms of replacing the, the carpet, is also a, a health reason?
Well, you know, you don't know what's in there, I suppose, after, I don't know how old it is, but it's, it's.
I think it's probably.
Definitely older than the rest of the building. You can see when you look at it.
So is there any objection to having this covered with the COVID grant? Opposed to coming out of operating surplus out of our reserves?
Are you asking me or council, sorry?
I'm sorry, council?
Yeah, thanks.
Council, do you want to chime in, please?
Well, I see carried forward from 2020, the op, from the operating surplus. So I would, I would think it's reasonable to use it from the carry-forward funds from last year.
And not for COVID-related? Is that, is that correct?
Actually.
Sorry.
Well, I was going to add that the, the, some of that funding is to correct a condensation problem. So that's not a COVID thing, and they're kind of rolled together here.
Okay. Sorry, CFO, you have a que, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, through the mayor to Counselor Paulson, I just wanted to clarify something. Carry forward just means the expenditure is carried forward from 2020. So it's not the surplus that's carrying forward. The source of the funding is operating surplus, but it's the expense that's being carried forward from. So it was something that was budgeted for 2020, didn't happen. We're carrying it forward to 2021.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Tinsley, do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Counselor Kushner?
No, I do not.
Counselor Paulson, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments regarding our budget?
I don't know, it happened to my meeting here. There we go.
What happened to your meeting?
Sorry. Screaming like.
Sorry, on page 10, for, of the staff report for all of council, says initiate communication with the forest initiative with the Comox First Nations of 30,000. Obviously with COVID, there's a good chance we're not going to be doing anything this year. And we'll look at, my suggestion is we move that to 2022. On page 10?
Yes, I'm looking at it.
Okay. Counselor Tinsley, any response to that?
The reality of the current environment would be that it's, it's not going to move forward in a dramatic way. I, I think the sooner, I believe we had a discussion about at least starting some initial communication around it with the First Nations. And I, you know, so I believe that, that can start. I think the, the physical world of the actual moving forward would be much later, just because of the reality. An interesting thing is I believe there's a, a small community that's already, it's either on one of our islands, a, a small islands or whatever, that's got a, or they're putting in place a, 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 a working forest as part of their community plan. So it's quite, it's, it's, it's quite the part of the process of both reconciliation and also encouraging different styles of forestry, forestry practice management.
I agree. I think Counselor Tinsley, the communication can happen through, you know, phone calls and through Zoom or Microsoft Teams this year. But I don't think, I mean, even if the way the government has a shortage of the vaccines this year, I don't think everybody's going to be vaccinated by the end of the year. Of course, I mean, I'm not a psychic, I can't look into the future by just the way it's going. So I don't believe we're going to have a meeting face-to-face and it also time to organize for 2021. So I would like to move that money to 2022 for the 30,000, still communicate and still establish a relationship. But, sorry, CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to make a comment that I haven't included it in any year yet of the financial plan. And that's entirely up to council. We can just leave it out for now and then revisit it when we do budget planning for 2022 in the fall. But sort of it remains on our, our list. You know, the C O would work in collaboration with K F N and, and mayor and council to initiate it. Just, we don't put any money anywhere until we do the next round.
Sounds good to me.
Perfect.
Yeah, makes sense.
Thank you. Does anyone else on council have any questions regarding the detailed financial draft? On page 14, which is the top one, regarding elections. So CFO, there's a budget for $2,525 for 2022. We know there's going to be an election. Is every year that money's budgeted, is that put aside and accumulated for the election?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was the intent. So right now, we don't actually have a election reserve in our bylaw. So that's something that I wanted to discuss with the C O and we will bring to council at some point. And like you say, that, that was the intent, was to put away a little bit of money every year so that when we get to an election year, the money's sitting there, ready to be used. So I think, I think between the C O and I, we need to, you know, do a review of the reserve bylaw, come up with a reserve policy, bring that to council and, and then, you know, figure all of that out. So, so right now it's in the budget. You know, with a, with a small expense every year, we can change that, which might be a, a good idea because 2022 is, is coming up fairly quick. We may want to just budget everything in that one year. And then from 2022, start our new, you know, our new policy where we put away a little bit here and there. So I'll, I'll leave that up to, to council to discuss and, and decide on.
Thank you. Any comments from the counselors? None? Okay, so again, this is our last read until March. And nobody has any other questions or concerns?
So could I, could I just point out that?
Sorry, Counselor Paulson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 15, under the net line, there, there is several of the COVID grants listed there under the non-capital projects and other items. So when I looked through this, I thought that was one way of tracking the money that, that's being used towards the COVID grant items. And I, I would like to make a suggestion that we, as a council, we look at the COVID money. And instead of allocating the money according to dollar value and things that come up, that we take a look at priorities and, and base the decisions that we make on spending that money on what the priorities are. And especially around COVID, like for instance, the ramp and walkway to the gazebo, if that was to come out of the COVID grant money, it would be meeting the goals of what that money is for, to better the community and make it more accessible and resilient for the people in the community using it. So rather than, rather than just saying, you know, we should allocate this much money to a new dollhouse and then this much, this much money to something else. If we, if we came together with a list of. came together with a list of priorities that that would best suit using that money, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. C A O, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair. I I think that's a really good idea. And it seemed, you know, the the criteria for that grant was quite broad. But one of the key criteria was services to vulnerable citizens. And so clearly, this would meet that bill to provide support to people who have mobility issues or who, you know, want access to a park area that's covered because they live in an area that where they don't have that. So yes, I think that would be a great, great use of that fund.
One one of the suggestions that was discussed also is with this covid grant, we should be purchasing and sort of stockpiling all the necessary P P Es that we're going to need through the year in terms of mats, sanitizers, cleaning products, so on and so forth. And also, one of the things that we should probably be looking at is those temperature checks for people going into the Kelsey Center or into the office. I know they're about ninety dollars a piece. But to have that in there as well is is my suggestion with some of that money is that we sort of plan ahead, as Counselor Paulson was pointing out. Does everybody agree that we should be picking up some extra P P E?
Sorry, can I speak?
Counselor Tinsley?
I I think the key is not so much stockpiling because of, you know, we don't, you know, but but it's making sure the monies are set aside so that we can keep it as have it available as we need it, depending on the length of covid. And I totally agree with the priority. We were talking about this this figure before. I, you know, I think I brought it up as a question, and and it's around two hundred and change left. And that number, because we've talked about a couple of big items that might be included in that, we need to to Counselor Paulson's excellent idea, you know, look at that. And depending on all those items that we've we've talked about here, prioritize them. Because definitely that larger item we talked about before with the list one, that type of thing is is a huge chunk out of it, right? But I definitely would agree. Sorry, I just want to add that a lot of it is my understanding of it from when we read it through originally is around revitalizing the community as it reopens from covid. So this this, you know, not only the the ramp that that's been mentioned, but also possibly, you know, the anticipation of tourists arriving in in larger numbers again, right? Which involves signage and things like that, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is the appropriate place for an update on the status of what was, for example, the the speaker system, all that. Is that the appropriate place to ask for an update?
Sure, I I can provide some of that. We have sent out, we have the estimate and the details for the sound system. And I've contacted the supplier who has yet to give me a delivery date, but they're they're chasing down what they provided as a quote earlier. And it's a system that a lot of local governments use. It's a very similar system where individual mics for each counselor on when we're back in council chambers, which will be handy because it also will continue to record if that's desirable. And also two for staff, so myself and the CFO, as well as two for the public who who attend public meetings or any meetings and who wish to speak. And the entire thing is portable. So when we have public hearings, for example, with the rezoning application where there's any kind of a bylaw requiring a public hearing, where we anticipate a large crowd, we can relocate the system quite easily into the gym and provide for adequate sound for people who have hearing disabilities or just, you know, are not hearing as well as they used to when their ears were younger. It seems to be a very practical and respectful system for citizens to be able to hear what's going on in the meetings. So we we should have something on that fairly soon. And I and I guess the CFO can add actually this, but we we've been doing some work on the keyless entry system. The the prices might come in a little higher than we expected, so we're looking at a number of options. But maybe I can ask the CFO to give them an update on that. She's been doing the work on that for us.
Thank you, C A O. So we've got two companies that I've contacted, possibly a third I'm looking into. But the two that I have contacted are getting quotes to me. There's actually somebody physically coming up on Thursday to walk around the building, have a look at the doors that need the fobs. The other company I sent photos to, so it it's in progress. Just don't have any final final costs or anything yet.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that's all the questions that I have. Any counselor have a question regarding budget? Sorry, CFO, go ahead.
I just wanted to make, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one more comment about the budget that I I I think, you know, it's good to reiterate to to council is that whatever's in the budget right now, it's it's never really set in stone. So it's it's your base budget. You've got some projects going on. You've got some expenditures that you have agreed on. You know, you can go forward with this budget right now. And and during the year, if if there are discussions held around certain projects or certain topics where you want to spend money, for example, you know, you you have this wish list or or covid items that you want to spend the money on, the financial plan can be amended at any time. So typically, what we do is during the year, council would make a resolution to to spend money from, you know, a certain reserve or or wherever. And and then at the end of the year, we would consolidate all of those resolutions into a staff report and amend the financial plan. So it can be changed at any time. It's it's not set in stone. I just I just wanted to reiterate that to to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
C A O, you chimed in?
Sorry, I I I no.
No? Okay, thank you. So financial plan twenty twenty one recommended resolution that the committee of the whole receives a financial plan for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five, version three. Report information and discussion. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
Opposed? Discussion? Bylaws? There's none in place for this meeting. New business? Public question period, maximum fifteen minutes. The purpose of this public question period is to permit people in the gallery to ask questions about issues discussed by council during the meeting. Speakers will not be allowed to ask more than one question if time permits. And everyone will have the opportunity to ask a question. Speakers are allowed to ask a second question for the record. State your name. Obviously, the question period is not taking place tonight. In Cameron, none? Recommended resolution that the February ninth two thousand twenty one committee of the whole meeting be adjourned. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Opposed? Opposed? Discussion carried. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You as well. Stay safe.